I'm Michael Fenton. I am appointed by Council President Letterman to chair this important committee, the Working Group on Digital Equity and Internet Access. We've got some things we want to achieve today. I'd like to do introductions for the committee members, talk about our mission statement, timeline for work, tell you a little bit about some of the meetings that I've had with Dr. Robinson who's here so far and some of the work that's been going on in the background by other stakeholders, and then we'll schedule when we're gonna meet. So, again, I'm Michael Fenton, a member of the city council. I've been on the city council for fourteen years and I am not a digital expert. I'm a lawyer and I've been tasked with this because I think Council President Letterman believes that it's gonna require some complicated navigating of different stakeholders and I know how to do that. So, I'm the chair. I, in my private practice, I do represent some telecommunications companies, some utility providers, including internet and cable providers and telephone and cellphone companies. So I have knowledge about the industry and how it works, although not on a technical basis. So, that's me. And Gene, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, my name's Gene Canosa Albano. I'm a resident of Springfield in sixteen acres outer belt area. And I'm a librarian. I am the Assistant Director of Public Services at Springfield City Library. And my interest in this topic is in learning more about what we could do to, for residents. Some of whom only have their phones to rely on or otherwise don't have good, reliable, affordable internet access. Some things we do already at the library or loan, lend out Chromebooks and hotspots. We provide wifi for free use. We provide computers for free use. But we know that there's more that can be done. We provide training on how to use all of the above. And I had forgotten to mention, I'm so, I'm so glad to see Dr. Robinson walk in, that I have also been participating in a committee that he is co-facilitating on digital equity. So I think this dovetails nicely. And outside of all of that, I'm a big Springfield Thunderbirds hockey fan. Go T-Birds.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris, Chris Polanco. I currently work for Springfield School Department as a digital media, media analyst. My job mostly consists of helping build the SPS website, managing social media accounts, doing video, doing photos, fixing digital problems. I also do freelance work for Focus Springfield, covering the school committee and the city council meetings and all their outside events, like the Pride Parade coming up, Jazz Fest, all that stuff. I've been doing this since I was twenty, so almost a decade under my belt. I think I'm very familiar with the internet and all the ins and outs of it and all the workings and it's the Wild West and the internet. So, but like you're asking, digital equity comes from my experience in the school department. It's very obvious and can be seen everywhere when you look at people even trying to job, apply to jobs for SPS, everything is digital. There's no more paper applications. There's no more sit in this room and fill it out for us and we can get back to you. It's all on the computer and I see the gap, even with adults and even some children. It's like they don't really know how to navigate what they're looking at. And I think the internet is a powerful tool that can be used to everyone's advantage. So hopefully this group were able to give everyone access to the powerful tool that it is.
Thank you. Frank, yeah.
So should the camera's looking at me here? So I'm Frank Robinson. I, my day job, this is my night job. My day job is I'm Vice President of Public Health at Bay State. I've been at Bay State for a long time. Resident of Springfield, I've been in Springfield since about seventy-six. I'm a homeowner in East Forest Park. Property owner in McKnight. So I have some vested interests. The work that I do is broad, but in particular in relationship with this committee, I am leading the Alliance for Digital Equity. It's a regional coalition which includes all four counties in Western Mass and the Alliance came into being in June, July of twenty twenty at the beginning of the pandemic. It was made obvious to a bunch of us that while we were all moving to the internet, that there were a whole lot of folks that could not move to Zoom or WebEx or Skype or whatever we were using in those days and that there would be a huge challenge for folks. We consider digital equity as the super social determinant of health. And what that means is it cuts across civic workforce, employment, education, healthcare, any particular service or resource you need. If you're not digitally literate, if you have digital inequities that interfere with your ability to participate, then you're, it's becoming a determinant of health. So that's sort of the big picture. And we're currently, as the Alliance, which again includes Hampden County and the city of Springfield in terms of coalition members, we're currently in the process of implementing a what's called a digital equity partnership program funded through the Mass Broadband Institute. Their program that we're implementing has four basic pillars. One's called modernization of public spaces. So library community room, a public park, a place where folks go to food pantry perhaps, that where wifi connectivity would be helpful. This program will allow us to support the modernization of that space. So we could bring wifi to that, to that facility. The second program is digital skills, digital literacy. I like to call it digital skills. And your name is?
Chris.
Chris, Chris was not talking about, it's really getting on the internet, me ever use it, didn't mean fluent. So it's really around access, adoption and application. So that's the second program. Third program that we're doing is called connectivity. So there are folks that are economic, there are economic hardships and housing instability. If I'm homeless, if I'm living in a shelter, a domestic violence shelter, if I'm a new American, I'm in a resettlement community, those populations are less likely to have access to the internet. So this connectivity program would provide them devices, hotspots, jetpack, whatever they call and skills to actually become connected. And then the last program is called the Affordable Connectivity Program. By enrolling low-income folks in ACP, a shorthand for that, they get an additional thirty dollars a month that is used to offset their their wifi. And for some folks that have no wifi, that's free wifi. For folks that actually have a cable bill with wifi, it reduces their bill by thirty dollars a month. So those are four programs that we're currently in the process of gearing up implementation. The NBI will be out here on the twenty-seventh to do a press conference at Tech Fundy sort of to announce the awards to three programs across the state. We're one of those three programs. The grand program that we implement will operate at about five point one million dollars for two years. That's a total two-year allocation. Sounds like a lot of money, but spread that out over about twenty programs, three nonprofits in four counties and it's, it's a modest, it's a good investment, it's a good start, but it doesn't cover all the needs. So I'm gonna stop, I can, I can go on. I'm just getting what I'm done. Well, I'll stop there with my intro and then as we figure out where we're going, I'll bring other information to the table.
Thank you very much. Perfect to have you. Will?
I'm Will Brock. I'm the Senior Project Manager for the Office of Disaster Recovery with the city of Springfield. My interest in this group is that I spend a lot of time dealing with low-income residents in the city, dealing with their housing rehabilitation through my two programs that I run for the city. And I personally see a lot of digital inequities, so I was hoping that I can use my position with the city to hopefully make somewhat of a difference in a different area and make a positive impact on the city.
What was your program?
So I run the Healthy Homes Program and the Exterior Repair Program.
Okay, so let's see, let's go now to the participants online. And we're joined also by Council President Letterman, who I know would like to make some welcoming remarks when we're done with introductions here. So Archbishop, I see you're on the call. Do you want to go next and introduce?
Greetings. I'm Archbishop Timothy Paul. And as you know, I'm a community leader, Chairman of the newly formed Hope Community Development Corporation. But unlike Frank and others on the private side, I am the CEO of OmniPoint Technology. We build internet infrastructure. In fact, we are carriers, granted carrier status through the FCC and we in eleven states, we're doing this in Texas and Florida and in Georgia and Alabama, particularly in Alabama. What I like about what we're trying to do is Alabama formed what we call a broadband cooperative district, eleven count, seventeen, I'm sorry, counties came together. And they formed a broadband cooperative district, which we are the lead infrastructure builder for Get White Alabama. You can Google it. It's, it's a pretty big story. It's because it's the Civil Rights Mecca. Salma and Tuskegee. A great, 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 great project we're doing down there. Also, we just completed a project with a public-private partnership with the city of East Hartford. I see Springfield can do this. Forty-two million dollar project of fiber to the premise, fiber to every home in East Hartford. We have some thousands of residents on the ACP program, both through our mobility as well as our internet program. So we are ACP approved and we do an ISP and we're able to provide ACP. So Frank, that was a good plug on that ACP piece. I heard the, I heard the person talking from the library. And if you need more tablets and Chromebooks, we certainly have them. We'd like to see folks get connected. We're actually paying for their, for their connectivity with the next generation, ninth, ninth generation iPads and Samsung Chromebooks. And so I got involved with this project because I believe I have been poking the corner office for some time, Thirty-Six Court Street and was part of the reason why the feasibility study was ordered. I don't know where it stands. I did talk with the corner office just the weekend, you know, we, we need to get something done on this. And, and make city, the city of Springfield a smart city. I think that having one internet provider in the city is counterproductive to us and it leaves that area. Right now, we received a grant from the state of Massachusetts in with the IT bill for the, the trial courts, which are digitizing. A real big problem because as the trial court digitizes, if people don't have internet, they're gonna be defaulted at court. And it's something that we took on and in an IT bill, the in last year's budget, we were approved. We're still waiting on our money. Obviously, we're like, Frank, we don't get the announcement yet. But it, it has been written in the budget, has already been approved and signed off. And with that, for those monies, we're looking to concentrate on fifteen census tracts in Springfield of the, of the poor, underserved and unserved areas. Hill, McKnight, Bay, all those particular neighborhoods that really are affected, underserved, can't afford the connectivity. So we build infrastructure. We're doing this. I started it off as a social justice issue and it's become something that is my new gospel, the gospel according to internet. I will say this to you, that the late John Lewis, who I happen to have met, and he was from Alabama, he said that the twenty-first century civil rights issue is, is broadband. And I really believe that the civil rights issue is connecting folks and folks having connectivity and equal or digital equity. And so I'd like to offer any of the skills that I have. I heard Counselor Fenton say he represents clients. He's a great lawyer and telecommunications, but he doesn't understand or really doesn't get into the technical side. But you've got a great team here and that understands how to build infrastructure. We did the first micro-tranching project in Springfield two months ago. We micro-tranched, we put fiber in downtown as a test to see how it would go and how it would not disrupt traffic. And it was a smooth, smooth project. So we've installed fiber as a test to see if we can supply and provide some of the businesses in the area and residents in, in the area of some real good affordable internet. So that's my, that's my story and I'm sticking with it.
That's terrific. Thank you, Archbishop. Alex, do you want to go next, please?
Oh, there we go. All right. Just had to figure out how to unmute myself. Yes, I'm Alex Martin. I live in the city of Springfield. I have a home in sixteen acres. I work in Springfield through the Department of Elder Affairs. I run the Clodogonception Community Center and I basically, at the center, I work with seniors. And also at the center, I also have individuals that is blind and low vision and I have individuals that have disability. The reason why I'd like to be on this is because I found that many seniors have a lot of challenges in connecting to the internet. They don't understand how to fill out the paperwork for all of the wonderful programs that is out there. And so what I started to do at the center was have one-on-one training where they will meet with me. I will talk to them about how to use their smartphone, their laptop, tablet, whatever they have. You know, some of their children is wonderful and giving them, you know, these things, but they don't know how to use it. During COVID, we found that to be a large problem because a lot of seniors did not know how to access the internet. And we're still feeling that impact right now. And to go along with this, I also, and I have to be, be upfront, I am on the board for the Visionary Club. And the Greater Springfield Visionary Club is the, the whole complete name. And this is individuals that is blind and low vision. And, and they also have problems with accessing the internet. I have the, the Mass Commission for the Blind. There's a program that's called Access Tech. That program comes out to my center and they help individuals that is blind and low vision to be able to use computers and laptops and tablets. Now, this is all wonderful and great and beautiful, but guess what? At the center, I don't have an internet, a wifi. I don't have wifi connection. And the, the counselors are working on it for me and the mayor has been absolutely wonderful in helping with getting this going, but we really need it as of tomorrow. And the, the challenge that I'm facing is that in order for me to be able to use wifi, we have to use a hotspot. And the hotspot, only a certain amount of people could get on there. So that's a challenge. And I, I love the idea of us having fiber and all these other things. So being a part of this, I think this is a great opportunity for us to be upgraded and be able to have internet access. The other challenge that I face is that, you know, having the internet, this will be really great for security at the center because we know that in today's world, we need better security systems. And so the internet will add to this. So there's a lot of different parts to this. I'm excited about it. I think that having this information will open up this whole situation to a lot of individuals that don't have an opportunity to be able to know about tablets, smartphone, how to work it and to just bring everyone in. So I'm looking forward for us working together. And I know I have a lot that I just mentioned, but of course we have to break it down into small manageable parts and be able to, you know, work on that. And that's about it.
That's terrific. Thank you, Alex. Justin?
Hi, good evening, good evening, everyone. My name's Justin Ayala. I'm the Practice Manager for the Geriatrics Workforce Enhancement Program at Bay State Health. So I work with an older adult population as well, similar to Alex, have seen similar challenges, barriers. You know, not only for the patients that we serve, we do primarily home visits. We also do some virtual visits as well, but also for their caregivers. So there are, you know, multiple programs that we can offer for the patient and the caregiver education and around falls prevention and things of that nature that we've seen, you know, are not only, you know, able to be offered in person, but also virtually. And we've seen the challenges of, you know, not having reliable internet connection or even the means to access it or, you know, the, sort of the knowledge around accessing that as well. So, so that's the lens that I bring to, to this group. And looking forward, I'm also part of Frank's Older Adult Digital Equity Network. So looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you. And Roberta?
Hi, good evening. My name is Roberta Walker Kilkeny. I've been a resident of Springfield for eight years. I live in the McKnight District. I'm on the board of both the McKnight Neighborhood Council and Springfield Preservation Trust. My postgraduate degrees and certificates are in Economic History and Development and also in Educational Technology. I have taught fully online for over twenty years at a New York City Public College. For the last eight years, I've done that from my home in McKnight. And at that college, I've designed and taught courses, among others, that aimed at bridging the digital divide. During the school closures caused by the COVID pandemic, I mentored K to twelve teachers across the country in both remote and online teaching. There is a difference that a lot of people don't appreciate. And that posed particular challenges for people in rural areas and, and so on. But as far as Springfield goes, I found that the public school system very quickly realized that there was a need to make hardware available. But there were still serious challenges, especially in terms of the inability of family members to support their children with the use of the technology. And there were also accessibility challenges for children who had various disabilities, whether they were physical or learning disabilities. And these challenges, as some of the other members of the group have mentioned, extends beyond children to, especially to seniors and persons with disabilities, but to the residents of Springfield in general. I feel strongly that digital equity and internet access is dependent on both the infrastructure, the hardware, the cabling, the networks and so forth being available and on the availability of digital literacy skills. I have some knowledge of networking and the hardware and so forth, but that's not really my strength. My strength is more in terms of being able to assist with developing programs around digital literacy, how to deal with the digital divide and so on. So I'm glad to meet all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm gonna turn it over to Council President Letterman for some introductions. But before I do, I just want to say that I am really impressed by the group that he has been able to assemble by reaching out to the public to create a forum for us to be able to have this discussion. And I myself am fully committed to making sure that by the end of this year, we have some deliverables that we can all be proud of that come out of this committee. So Counselor Letterman? Sure. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all the members, both here in person and those participating remotely and virtually, for your willingness to serve. You know, I, I sort of began working on this process of bringing more folks to the table around these issues when I became president last year with the Working Group on Civic Engagement. And we saw great success from that group, a very similar experience to what we're seeing here today, which is when we put the call out, folks really answered it and came forward with their own experiences, their own vision for how we could improve civic engagement in Springfield. And I was so impressed with that, that I felt we really needed to continue that work this year and especially around core issues where I think we need to grow as a city in order to be ready for the future. And while I think that all four of the working groups that we've appointed this year are equally important issues, I think that this particular one is one of the most foundational to our future success. I think that it ties in really to each of the other issues. And so I think you have a, a big task ahead of you, but I think hearing everybody's introductions today, I agree that you are all up to that task. And I certainly became sort of involved in, in this work during the pandemic, which I think really highlighted for many of us in local government and sort of laid bare the inequity that does exist in digital access and really the impact that that had for individuals in our community in terms of access and resources, information, commerce, education and healthcare. You know, I certainly can remember, you know, having to work with constituents who were, you know, because they didn't have access to, you know, high-speed internet, were being asked to fax documentation to the state, you know, or like looking for who has a fax machine, right? So this really is critical and I, I want to thank all of you for being here. I certainly am gonna take a backseat. If you look at the way we ran the Working Group on Civic Engagement, we really put it in the hands of the individuals who were appointed to the committee and I see this going the same way. You have an extraordinarily capable leader in the chair, Michael Fenton, who is one of the most innovative members of the council and one of the most longest-serving. So I think that he's gonna be a great resource for all of you. And the, the last thing I would say is as you think about the direction that you want to go this year, remember that your final deliverable, what we're looking for are ideas that we need to pursue. And so you don't have to worry so much necessarily about getting one hundred percent, like here is a step-by-step plan, right? So we want you to be looking at what are the best practices and what steps can we take as a local government to pursuing them in the future. Certainly myself, I, I come to it with a very strong advocacy in favor of developing a municipal fiber internet network and I'm hopeful that that will be part of your conversation. But I also recognize the immediate need to have implementation of programs that can close the gap much more quickly than the construction of that. Well, that will take some time and, and resources. And I'm also aware that digital equity is much bigger than just being able to subscribe to internet access, right? It goes into all of the things that you're talking about. The last thing I'll say is appropriately, I think you're one of the first committees to use the hybrid committee meeting setup. And this is something that we've, you know, brought to the city council as, as a goal of being able to use technology to involve more people. And so with that, I am going to turn it back over to all of you and just know that if I can be a resource in the future, I am certainly available and Counselor Fenton and I talk all the time, probably more than he would even like. Certainly appreciate your leadership, Mr. Chairman, and I'll leave you all to your work. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so we are forty-five minutes in. And I'm gonna, I would like to spend the rest of the time sort of sending, setting some of the high-level objectives for how we will operate and what we can and expect to be able to accomplish here. One thing I would like to start with is that I've been a part of a variety of specialty groups like this. Groups on residency compliance in the city, marijuana zoning implementation, of police commission matters. And there's a few things that I've learned. One is that we have to keep the meetings to an hour if we spec, if we expect to be respectful of everybody's time. Everybody here is a volunteer. These meetings are only gonna be an hour.
So, um, uh, today we're gonna finish in fifteen minutes. And I think that we should also, at the end of the meeting, set a schedule for how regularly we'll meet for the rest of the year. The working group that Jesse was just talking about met five times. If we only meet five times this year before the end of the year, we're not gonna be able to come up with a comprehensive answer or a plan for how to, uh, to do some of the things that we, we would like to achieve in this group. So first thing is, we'll meet for now. Um, the second thing is, we'll set a meeting schedule. Now, the quicker we can get our arms around what we're gonna do, the better. The way I'm thinking of this and some of the notes that I've written here are, we have three primary questions and some sort of sub-questions. The first is, who doesn't have access? Who are the people who don't have access? And Frank and others who have expertise in this space, we have data and studies that have already been conducted to tell us who those people are. Our focus is Springfield-specific, Springfield-only. And we wanna know what, what are the people who don't have internet access like? And then the second question is, why? Who are they? Why don't they have it? Um, and the third question is, how do we get it to them? Um, and, and so I think we have to start at our next meeting grappling with those questions. And some of the how, I expect to fall into three primary categories. And those are monetary, they don't have the resources. Uh, informational, they don't have the knowledge to be able to get access to the, uh, for example, the ACP or other programs that would make it accessible to them from an affordability standpoint. And the third item is infrastructure. Um, you know, the infrastructure component, at least based on what I understand about Springfield's accessibility for internet, is one of the least consequential for people to get access. Um, I had some preliminary means.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not sure what you meant by that last statement. You found that the infrastructure was one of the least consequential? I'm not.
It's my understanding that every household in the city of Springfield currently has access to be able to subscribe to the internet. There are no residences in the city, this is my understanding, and we can bet this further if there's people who think that that's not the case, who, who have the ability to connect to the internet. So that goes back to the first question, the second question, which is, okay, well, why aren't they? Is it that they don't have the money, they can't afford it, or is that they're not, uh, what, they qualify for programming and they're not aware of it? Um, and, and so that's kind of where my understanding is of the situation in the city. And, and we have to, I think, start our first work with drilling down on those questions and making sure that we all agree with the baseline information. It's not true just because I said it's true. We have to review the studies and look at the data and say, okay, one percentage of people in Springfield just don't have access to the internet. And there's, that's a different number than the people who have internet. Access and having it are two totally different things. And having access doesn't mean that you can afford it or that you know how to get it. So I think we have to start there, and I expect that we'll spend close to the first third or quarter of our time on those issues and trying to solve for, how do we, how do we make it more affordable? How do we make it more, uh, people have knowledge about the programs out there that can get them access to it? And what can this committee do to recommend and implement to the city to do that? Um, and then the remainder, I expect of our, of our time. Um, and if people have opinions on this, please, I welcome them. I, I would imagine that the remainder of our time, which I hope will be more than half of our time, would be spent on talking about, now that we understand the, the problem with who those are who don't have internet, why they don't have it, and how we get it to them. What about the people who do have internet? And how do we compare to surrounding communities from an affordability and a reliability and a speed standpoint? And that's where I think you'll see the conversation more about fiber and infrastructure improvements. Because that's a different question, though, than the one of, we've got infrastructure now for everybody. Why isn't it, why isn't it being used by everybody? So that's, um, that's how I have sort of sketched out the direction of the things that I think we can achieve. Um, you know, if anybody has comments on that or we wanna pivot along the way, I'd welcome that. But at this stage, that's sort of the archetype for what I'm envisioning we can, we can do here. Does anybody have any?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna comment on that for a moment. You, you, you're right. Uh, there is, there is, uh, uh, internet accessibility, but our problem that we have with most of those folks, and I think Frank and everyone can attest to this, is, uh, you know, in most, uh, areas, you need to have, you need to have, uh, uh, a healthier, uh, choices because these folks don't have choices. Uh, and, uh, and when you have one player in town, and, and I know that exclusivity is now gone away, I, I believe. Uh, when you have one player in town, uh, there, you know, you don't have a Burger King and a McDonald's and a, and a Wendy's, you don't have choices, right? So it's what I just echo what you said. Yes, there is internet or copper or whatever you wanna call it. Correctly in, uh, accessible to the homes, but they, there is all, there's only one transport mechanism to get to those folks. As, uh, uh, you know, other than LTE, the home internet now, that's now coming out, the five G LTE, which we're able to, to get into homes very quickly to address some of these issues. But I wanted to echo what you're saying. There is, there is, and we'll get to that infrastructure later, but I wanted to just say, yes, you're right. But there's only one player in town.
I'm not always right.
So I, I would, you know, let me sort of build on what, what I'm hearing. So I maybe, uh, respectfully suggest, uh, a bigger picture. So what's our vision? Or I'll use, uh, uh, Bishop's comment for a smart city. Uh, in, uh, uh, digitally smart Springfield. It's not about connection. It's, it's about a whole lot of other stuff. And so I think if we don't envision the, uh, uh, digital equity in a broader sense, then we, we're gonna miss the boat on an awful lot of stuff. So I would recommend maybe, um, a good old-fashioned visioning, um, kind of opportunity to sort of build out the picture. So if we go back to the issue of connectivity, I try and stay away from connectivity or these, or digital literacy, or this as the initiative. Access, access includes affordability, connectivity, other stuff, adoption and application. And in those three buckets, uh, the issues of equipment, of literacy, of skills, of all this stuff is intertwined. And so you really, I don't think you can address the issue of digital equity without graving together all the elements that, uh, get people connected and once connected can use it and then are, uh, able to use it effectively to advance their own futures.
Completely.
So that's much bigger than connectivity. Uh, so I would say connectivity cuts across all those elements. So connectivity is important, but I'd say, again, uh, a more, uh, complex picture is probably required if you're gonna do, uh, do good jobs. The, uh, so the issue around, just let's take the connectivity for instance. So what we know is that, um, it's more about what happens once the internet gets into your house, unless it's when everybody's connected, that has to do with speed. Yeah, do I have sufficient speed? Uh, and can I get three or four devices on at the same time to still function as a family? And does that breakdown happen from the table to the house or is it the house itself? So what we know is the old housing stock has wiring that basically interferes with the speed.
Can, let me interrupt you and ask a question about that, Doctor. So the way that you're describing it is, and I agree. You need to weave in smart city and a broader picture. But the way I'm thinking about this is, if we can't as a group first come to a conclusion about what can be done to get internet to the folks who aren't currently using it, then I don't know that we can get to those second questions. So my thought is like, maybe spend just the next meeting talking about, you know, who are the people who don't have it? Why and how do we get it to them? And I think that those questions are a lot easier to answer. And maybe, you know, the answers are obvious to, to you or those who have studied it and researched it before. But my concern is that I first wanna tackle the, the, the easier and higher priority item, which is convincing ourselves that everyone, that we're doing everything we can to avail city residents for the services that are already there, to make sure that that's happening.
My pushback is, it's one-dimensional, and the problem is not one-dimensional. And to, to deal with it one-dimensionally, one piece at a time, I think is not, it's not the way that I do it. Um, I'm, I'm trying to understand the issues, and there are multiple reasons for not being connected or not using it. I don't know how. I don't have the money. Uh, or, or the house I live in has bad wiring, therefore I have limited or very poor access, so it's not functional. So those are, uh, obvious things. In fact, what we will find is that most houses have some connectivity or access to it. But we don't really know because ISPs won't tell you because it's market information and it's private. So I can't tell you how many residents in Springfield Housing Authority, which is low-income unit, has ACP or don't. Why? Because they won't give me the information. Why won't they? Because it's private market information. And there's nothing that can make Comcast, Charter, Spectrum share that information. So we really would never know from the cable companies where their lines stop.
So just. Have, really? Have you done surveys at all of like, uh, Springfield Housing Authority residents?
Yeah, we, we've done some limited work there, and it's, and it's, there's cable to the, to the building, and there are cable available. Uh, without, um, doing a full census of the housing residents there, we won't, we won't know that.
Well, that's kind of what I was saying is like, you know, we've done a survey where you send a letter, say, to every resident. You see if you get any response and kind of what the response is from that.
This, it's difficult. We, we did a survey, a, a pilot survey of, uh, uh, a set of, I think, about six of the units. They collect data and information around that to get a sense of what it looked like, but.
My, my thought with that is just, I was reading a case study on, uh, I was reading Cambridge's digital equity plan that they released. And they did something similar to that where they polled and sent surveys to all the public housing residents to kind of find out on a small sample size, you know, what percentage of people didn't have any access.
So I would like to contribute, um, two things.
I remember. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
It's okay. Um, one, those existing reports and studies that you referred to, Council Member Fenton, if we could have access to that before our next meeting. So that assuming any of us have time to read, um, those reports beforehand, we can come to the meeting at least knowing whatever information is in there, whether the information is, is good, half-good, whatever, we would know what already has been done. The second thing I wanted to say, and I'll reflect on my own experience, I live in a four-story building. Comcast will tell you that I have access because they run a cable to my house. But if you're on the third or fourth floor, you cannot access the internet. So during, during the pandemic, when my grandchildren were living on the fourth floor, I had to run cables inside the house at my own expense in order to make sure that they would have access. So this question of whether or not there's access has to be broken down, as the, the last gentleman said, to what's actually going on within the building. I understood from a lot of families in Springfield where the schools had distributed hotspots that they couldn't use those devices in their buildings because their buildings, the interiors were, did not have the infrastructure to connect them from the hotspot to the internet cabling that was out, you know, that may have reached the outside of the building but got no farther. So we need, we need to look at these things in what it actually means. And I think a survey of, of some kind and a multilingual survey, um, is definitely one way of addressing that. Cause the cable companies will tell you, you know, they have discounts, they have whatever running throughout the city. They don't begin to tell you what's really happening inside the buildings where people live.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody's.
I know you wanna close, but to Frank's issue, as, as an ISP, Frank, you're absolutely right. We have to report to our, to USAC, right? Our ACP customers, but we don't make that information, uh, uh, available. All you get from, from ACP is the, the actual numbers of residents who are ACP. But you miss one key area. In a household, if you're even on the Affordable Connectivity Program, people make the choice whether they're gonna connect with the internet or use it on their phone for mobility. Therefore, therefore, you have people who are using their cell phones for connectivity, ACP, and still don't have internet. And, 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 and that's, that's, that's an issue right there. We're dealing with it every day. People have a choice. If I'm gonna go with my phone or internet, they're gonna go with their phone and/or internet and suffer without the phone. So that's an issue that we'll have to tackle when we talk about it.
Absolutely, and I think for the report.
I, I just wanna add to the complexity. So if I have no transportation, the best connectivity that for me is my phone. Because I, wherever I go, I, I can be connected. So if I have an emergency need, I have my phone. So if I'm poor, uh, I may opt for a phone over a computer. Because it, so again, it's, it's just.
Well, in that study that you sent me, didn't it say something close to twenty-nine percent of Springfield households do not have a laptop?
Thirty-nine percent.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine, but that's census data, the census data is old.
Right.
So, but again, it's the best data we have. Now, we could, if we run that same report, given current census, it might be different.
It will be.
At, at that point, it was thirty-nine percent of households did not have a computer, so.
Right. And those folks are exactly the same folks that Yarz Bishop's talking about are electing to use their cell phones.
So if I'm, I think, I think, yes, so the folks could be opting to use a phone purposefully because they have no transportation. And so if I wanna be connected, the best device is a cellphone, not a computer.
Right.
So not only Frank, no, Frank, not only no transportation, but the cellphone has replaced the landline phone. That's their only source of communication in their home. A lot of folks don't have landline phones anymore. There are no landline phones in these homes.
I, yeah, I mean.
I have college students who write twenty-page papers on cell phones. They don't have laptops.
Very concerning. So, okay, so let's talk about two things before we adjourn. The first is, when are we gonna meet and how often? I said an hour. Does anybody, the reason I say an hour is because I know that people's schedules and, um, availability is tight. We can expand that. I just, whatever we say it's gonna be, I think it's important that we honor that and stick to it because otherwise volunteers can get frustrated and considered abuse of their time. Does anybody wanna make the meetings longer than an hour, maybe an hour and a half instead?
I think you can give us some assignments, like Frank and I or some groups of us can get together and be prepared to bring a report back to the subcommittee, which will shorten that meeting and keep it at an hour.
Okay, all right. So let's stick with an hour for now. Um, let's pick, uh, when our next meeting will be. Um, today is, uh, Thursday, which is the second Thursday of the month. So one option is we could meet the second Thursday of every month, and that would be only monthly meetings. And that would be that we have one, two, three, four, five, six. That would mean we would have seven meetings before the end of the year. Is that reasonable to start?
So my, my challenge with the second Thursday. So my, my challenge was the second Thursday of every month. That's why I was on next door. I have a board meeting on the, on the board of the Basically Academy of Public Schools. So that would hit. So this time slot hits that board meeting every, would hit that board meeting every month.
Okay, um, so.
First Thursday, third Thursday.
Uh, Thursday, I have a thing. Um, but the first Thursday. I don't have anything the first Thursday. What about the first Thursday of every month for everybody?
I can commit.
All right, so we're.
I have, I have a board that day, uh, on the first. I have a board meeting on the first.
On just, on just that day or every first Thursday?
Every first Thursday. Of, of the month. Oh, oh, uh, yeah, of the month. That's what you're referring to, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, what time is, what time is your board meeting?
It's at six.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with the six o'clock meeting time?
Does it have to be on a Thursday?
It doesn't. We could do Wednesday. We could do the first Wednesday of every month.
Wednesday's work for me.
Not the first Wednesday for me, our board meets.
We got a really active group.
How about the second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday works for me.
I'll give up, I'll give up Bible study for an hour.
We won't quote you on that.
No, I have, I have, I have other teachers. They can do the job. I'll commit. This is important.
All right. So second Wednesday, anybody object to that? All right. So we're gonna meet the second Wednesday of every month. So that means our next meeting will be on Wednesday. The tenth, which I have a conflict on that night, but it is not every second Wednesday that I have a conflict. Uh, I just scheduled it. It's an event with a client at a place that I cannot reschedule. So. Okay, so there was a problem with the, is there a problem with the first Wednesday?
Well, the library board meets.
That's the first Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah.
And the third Wednesday, is that okay?
Yeah, third works for me. Third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday is Springfield Resurrection Trust's board meeting. On this second Wednesday, is there time either before or after your meeting?
It's a, it's a networking event that starts at four P M. And there's drinking involved, so no. I cannot do it on that day. I, we could meet the second Wednesday at six. It's just that first second Wednesday in May, that's a problem for me.
So could we change, change that just for this time? Change it to another day?
Yes, we could.
Tuesday, second Tuesday?
About Tuesday.
Just for, just for that month and then afterwards go back?
Yeah, let's try that. What about Tuesday, the ninth?
That's my McKnight Neighborhood Council meeting.
What about, all right, Camp Thursday, the eleventh. What about Monday, the eighth?
No city council?
Not that night.
That works.
That works.
Just for the month of May, just for the month of May.
Just for, yeah.
For the month of May.
Just for the month of May.
So in May, we're gonna meet on May eighth.
Yep.
But I also like the Archbishop's suggestion that we might meet in smaller groups around particular issues. So perhaps an agenda item for that next meeting might be how we might divide into smaller, smaller groups.
I agree completely. Thank you, Roberta. And, but let's get the schedule. So May eighth and June fourteenth and July twelve and August nine and September thirteen and October eleven and November eighth. And I do not think we should plan on meeting in December. We'll make November our last meeting because the thirteenth. I won't be able to do, and that's getting very close to a holiday. So we'll make our last meeting in November.
Okay.
And obviously we can make adjustments if necessary, but that'll be the meeting schedule. And we'll meet at six P M. We'll do this hybrid system. I should be able to be here in person for almost all of these. If not, I'll be on Zoom. Uh, and I guess for the next meeting, we'll talk about breaking down into smaller groups. And, uh, in the meantime, I think also as Roberta requested and which is smart. Uh, I will get some of those studies from Frank that, um, we reviewed, including that. Uh, what was the name of that study, Frank?
I, I can send, I can send everybody a link to that.
Oh, that would be great.
That, and so the, the, I guess, and, 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 and we're, we're going past a bit, but uh, as I shared with both you and, 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 uh, um, Council President, uh, Letterman. The states in the midst of a planning process. And so the state has made funding available for, for municipal digital equity planning processes. So at the state level, there's a statewide working group that's doing planning and I'm on that. At the municipal level, uh, uh, consultants are available to support municipalities in completing digital equity plans. Those digital equity plans will be assembled. They will be rolled up and they will then be used to allocate resources under the Digital Equity Act. Uh, uh, and, uh, let's, let's be, um, broadband some.
Beed, beed, broadband equity, yeah, broadband equity access development, yeah.
Yeah, so there, those whacks. And so there, in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, money is gonna flow. For both infrastructure and for, uh, uh, software services. Uh, and if we're not part of that planning process, if we're not at the table, we're not gonna be a full participant. So, uh, to, to the, to the, um, challenge of getting this work done completely and not stressing the committee, there are resources available through mass broadband that could be used to actually design the planning process, uh, support the planning efforts. Maybe do some of the data mining that we need, some of that analysis. So we can hire somebody to work for us with a digital equity planning grant. So, um, uh, the, the hook there is the mayor has to sign off. And so there has to be a relationship between this committee and the mayor's office because the mayor has to be the signature on accessing resources for that, for that plan. So I would say if we're gonna do a deep dive into this stuff and do it well, then uh, we wanna tag on to what MBI is currently investing. And we wanna tag on to their process, uh, that they, they laid out. I know that, um, municipalities in Western Mass now are signing up to do that work in, in the various counties. I think locally, I think Pollock is doing something there. Again, I'm not sure who's doing it, but.
I, I, I'm happy to be that conduit and in this group, I will play the role of the arm twister for the appropriate stakeholders outside of this group. So I'm happy to do that. Um, one challenge that we might have with getting that type of sign off, Frank, is that we're only gonna be around for the, by the end of this year. And why? I think what you're describing is a much longer commitment.
I will say that I was asked by the consultants to meet with the mayor and ask to get, to help explain the process a little bit more and to get that signed off. And I confess that I wasn't able to set that up before I was on this medical or sick leave. So that's something that, um, I should still do.
Uh, cop, Mr. 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 Chair, even though we're gonna be around a year, what Frank is saying is very valuable. We're doing it, Frank, in, in, in Alabama. You have to be a part of the planning process because the bead monies, uh, will be awarded in twenty twenty four. So the work we do now uh, this year is in preparation for next year in terms of any long-term infrastructure. And understanding that if we get these numbers now, we have to include the Springfield numbers. Because the bead money is specifically designed for underserved and un, and unserved areas. Uh, 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 first, first, on the first basis. And I know that because the man who wrote part of the bead is now on our board. Uh, from, from the Department of Commerce. So we've got some great, uh, time to put in, uh, counselor the work now, which would benefit us in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. When the state will receive whatever amount of money it is, close to nine hundred million to a billion dollars from the federal government. It's sixty seven, sixty seven billion dollars the federal government is allocating through the bead program for the states. But what state, what Frank is saying is MBI is the conduit right now and we should be working with them from a municipality to get access to some of those funds. Is that what you're saying, Frank?
Yeah, the, the statewide planning process runs right now. The committee I'm on from March to August.
I, so it's clear to me that, uh, Frank and our doctor and Archbishop have some of the most in-depth expertise on some of the aspects of where we need to go with this. So I'm gonna do what chairs do and delegate. And I think that before the next meeting. Um, actually Frank and Archbishop Timothy, if you're willing and able to work together on putting together a list of what you think would be the most effective smaller groups of this committee. And even tell me what you think should be, um, the things that we should tackle first on our next agenda. That will be a much more impactful because I, you know, I have familiarity in how to pull the levers in this building. And then the buildings outside of this building that impact it. But I don't know the first thing about bead or what you're talking about in that regard. And that seems to be incredibly important to something that we could achieve in this group. So.
Frank, so long as you chair it, I'll join you.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll take you on as my deputy. I know you appreciate that.
We've shared them boards together before, so he's the guy to take the lead. I'll just, I'll be there to support everywhere I can. We can meet for coffee, whatever you wanna do.
All right, all right. I, I got your contact. We'll connect.
All right, that would be great. So.
So you need something back from us by when?
Uh, maybe the week before we meet. So first week of May would be great. Just to propose the agenda and propose smaller working groups. And then we'll meet here in virtually on May eighth. Uh, then on June fourteenth, July twelve, August nine, September thirteen, October eleventh, November eight. We're gonna meet at six o'clock and, um, we've got our work cut out for us. But I have every reason to believe that we can really, as Counselor Letterman said, really make a huge impact with this group. And move the needle on what is, as Archbishop said, the civil rights issue of our time. And it is absolutely the civil rights issue of our time. And, um, we can't allow our residents to be left behind. So we're gonna work on that. And, um, with that, unless there's anything else, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Anybody have anything else to add?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And we will see you on the eighth.